I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take this time to welcome everyone to the meeting. And we'll start off with going through our motion for the claims for February 6th, 2025 to March 6th, 2025. I'll give you guys a minute to go through the line. We had the couple that we were a little bit unsure of, didn't we, on the gazebo? We decided that was going to put the streetlights.
I still haven't, because the guys have been busy, so I still haven't gotten 811 out here to check the two at the school.
Okay. Because they've been going up and down.
It's interesting to see where those are at.
Huh?
It'll be interesting to see where those are at.
I know where one is, but I don't know where the other is.
Yeah, one's right there on the front. I don't know where they're...
Because it's two different addresses.
It's supposed to be back farther where they're going for the light pole.
Minutes?
This guy's in the tunnel. There's a homeless guy living in the tunnel.
So, I'll make the motion to approve?
All right, we have a motion to approve. Second. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. All right, now we're gonna look over the minutes from February 11th, 2025. Yeah, motion to approve the minutes.
I make the motion.
Motion made. Second. Motion second. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fall in favor? For the motion for the minutes? Okay, I didn't hear you. Sorry. All opposed? Motion carried. All right, on speakers for tonight, we have...
Melanie.
In your group?
Her name's Melanie.
Okay. So the floor is yours.
So, we were looking to purchase the property at 300 East Main Street. I'm still not completely convinced that it's not a scam, is the thing. So, we're supposed to meet with the fellow on Friday to know more, but our... The... So I don't have any, like, set plan, plan yet, other than we were wanting to put, like, a... Like the shed homes, but they're building them stronger than just the shed. It's more like mini home.
More of that, no, where... Is that right next to you?
Right across.
Or across?
Or Dunaway.
Oh, yeah.
So we were gonna, we were gonna locate it in a different position. There's a house there and then the garage, but we were gonna put it in a different location and as, in the next few years or so, be tearing the other portions down. The house and the...
The garage is on our property. They said you do that?
No, no.
The garage is actually on our property.
Okay.
See, now that makes...
That's making me a little more nervous.
That property is shaped really funny. The way the property right next to it, it goes over and back up. And then that garage and that alley through there, that easement or whatever, that belongs to the town.
Okay.
So I just want you to know that up front.
Are you local?
We're from Dayton.
Oh, so you know you're not local.
No, that's what's making it so... We're a bit nervous, and that's why I didn't even know if I should come here yet. But just to get some sort of idea, you know, do I even want to pursue this guy or not?
I don't know if he would have an ab...
I don't know who...
He should have an... Jerry should have an abstract, shouldn't he?
He should, but he sold it, like, quickly.
Just recently, yeah.
And he sold it quickly to, I guess, that guy?
Maybe that's it, because I got nervous because the guy that is showing it belongs to just recently passed away. So then I was like, well, that's kind of fast, you know? For the property to go through whatever and then be handed to somebody else.
Five or six months.
Depends on if it's in a will or depends on if it's in a state. It depends on if it's... There's 43 versions. What I... I mean, I'm the fire chief, so I have nothing to do with this, but I would check with the county at the county level.
So I went to county.
And get the GIS pulled. It'll tell you who the owner is, it'll tell you all the property records.
Yeah, but the GIS is always up to Dayton.
It takes a year after, so.
It takes a year.
And he said he bought prior.
He went ahead and put that garage on his homeowner's insurance, but it really wasn't his garage. So I don't know if he would have filed a claim. I don't know if it would have ever been... But from what he shipped, from what the other owner showed me, that garage and that easement still belong to the town.
Okay.
So you couldn't have put anything on that easement.
Okay.
Without, you know, us deciding.
Right, right.
Which is right between the pump station and the garage, right there.
Yeah.
But doesn't that dip, fill up with water?
Yeah.
It can.
There's no city water stream there.
Not bad, like it does on our side, but...
Only time I've seen it back is...
It trickles down. I've seen it trickling down there.
It's more than under the house.
Yeah, it's under the house.
Yeah, because that's, I know it's flooded.
Yeah.
And if there's a leak, look. Okay.
Even on the other side.
She won't...
Yeah, on both sides.
Oh, okay.
Just, but being up front.
Yeah, no, I, I so appreciate it.
So you've not purchased it yet?
No.
Because the easement, she would do this.
Exactly.
They wanted to...
Well, what did county tell you?
Yeah. So the county, she really couldn't, all she could do was take me back there and show me how to use the computer and say, this is how you find out who owns and blah, blah. She did show me where that particular property with how he obtained it, we wouldn't get the true record unless we went to Henry County. Because it was done somehow through Henry County.
The title, maybe?
Title work might have been through Henry County, but everything has to be done through Wayne County. I mean, recording of the deed and all that information has to be done in the county where the property is located.
That's true.
See, that's... Yeah. And that's what it showed is...
Can you tell us what you read about this?
So the guy who is selling it is a, his name is Gary Barnes.
Well, that is not the deed owner.
Right, it's Dunaway.
That's correct.
So I've done a little bit of homework, as much as I've...
So Dunaway is local. He lives here.
He's not the, he didn't pass away.
No. I've seen...
The dad did.
His fa... His father did.
Okay. So...
Dunaway showed up as him, even though it wasn't really his property.
Yeah, but it was in Jerry Dunaway Jr.'s name.
Yeah, that's a... Jerry Keith Jr.
Yeah.
He's in Junior's van and he's still...
He's still here.
And he's had it since June of last year.
But he sold it.
No, if he sold it recently, it might not show up.
Yeah.
Now, it might not show up. This is from the auditor's records.
He says that the meeting is supposed to be between, be between the three of us. That somehow he bought it, but they haven't switched the name yet. And he knew he was gonna have to do that. If we were gonna purchase, he was gonna have to switch it into his name. He must have been doing a land contract with him, maybe? Some... He said they had a deal, but he would have that guy with him. I said, that's fine, but I want IDs, I want to see driver's license, everything. Now I'm questioning whether I want to...
Just in the past, if there is a land contract, usually land contracts have to be recorded also. So if there's a land contract before, between Dunaway and the new buyer, that contract should be recorded. If there's something between them, if they have some kind of...
Would that be something done through Henry County?
No, that has to be done through Wayne County.
Could there be a loan on it in Henry County?
It's still be recorded.
Yeah, it's still recorded there.
Yeah, it's where the property is located.
And that's what I thought, even in Montgomery County, I own a property in Montgomery County. And that's, everything is still, no matter what you get, it's recorded.
Right, it's always recorded in Wayne County. No, they might have been, the title company who processed, did the title work and did all the, the transfer from the previous owner to Dunaway, that title company could have been located in Henry County.
Or if there's a lien on it, taxing or something, maybe, to kind of build the properties. Have you talked to Mr. Dunaway?
I've not. That's why we're supposed to meet with him on Friday. He said he would have that fellow with him too, because I've been questioning, I'm like, Gary, Gary Rose, there's no, no connection family-wise that I can find anywhere. So I've been so skeptical through the whole thing, but then when the guy...
Mr. Dunaway, he's a businessman, so...
And it's an odd shaped lot, and I don't think the other guy there, if he knew it, they said he still paid homeowner's insurance on that garage, and that garage is...
Okay, so I'll make sure that we know that too. And see, I think I tried to get schematics of the property itself to make to look at that, to be sure.
Did you get the, is, do you get the maps from the assessor's office? Is there, is that, the big map taken from the assessor's office?
I mean, they have them. I didn't know if they, if, maybe you could purchase them.
You're just gonna make sure too, I mean, when you purchase a property that close to the river and it has a natural spring on it, that it could be considered a flood zone. And you'll have to place any kind of building that you have, if you live in it, or any kind of building that's on it, you might have to have flood insurance, which is on top of regular homeowner's insurance.
And it has to be two feet off the ground.
Man, that's expensive.
Very expensive. It'll be, it'll be double your homeowner's insurance.
Yeah, it's an outsized...
So GIS, if you, do you have Google?
Yeah.
So if you go to GIS's website for Wayne County and search 300 East Main Street, you have in-frame, street view, web soil survey, and plot. And it says plat map, but it's probably supposed to be plot map, but whatever. You click on that, and it actually shows you the measurements and everything of the property to what he's talking about, all the easements and everything, and where you're at, as far as the property. And it shows all the property lines and where the town easements are in the different colors. It'd be easier on a computer than a phone.
Yeah.
But back to her point, the area, throughout the area where you're discussing, they're gonna be getting stuff from FEMA over the next several months to include flood insurance and flood mandates because of all of the flooding. Not just here, but just nationwide.
Right.
That's the one thing they're targeting is severe storm damage, because whatever, this week. That's, I mean, everybody gets fired. But we were talking about that in the last town meeting, that FEMA's gonna be pushing that. Make sure you have that in your plans for whatever your...
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
Smaller houses, because it might flood away.
And everything here goes out.
So you might be a resident of Connersville.
Land there.
As long as you're still floating on the river, you're not breaking any law.
Most houses, we recommend fire extinguishers, and your house, I'll recommend light flickers.
Oh, I love it, I love it. Oh, I so appreciate it. I guess that answers everything.
Well, I hope we haven't put a lot of doubts in there.
No, because we're still, even if that, we're still, we love the area here. So we're still, I know there's the two other smaller properties too that were for sale. We were thinking about them, but who knows? So, I don't know. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Well, we'd like to have you in the...
Well, thank you. I'm hoping to. We love it out here. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, this time, Tom, do you have a report?
Police report, please, report.
I'll have Quentin first. Quentin's winning. Tom is up to him. Quentin, you first.
Oh. So you're being Quentin?
No, Quentin's, he's at the bottom. Go ahead.
All right, so I wanted to address you sort of on behalf of the five town employees who are humbly requesting that you vote this evening on two things. One is the addition of medical insurance for us, the health insurance. And then secondly is for funding for the health savings account that's associated with that. I wanted to bring a couple things to light before that, that occurs, and just maybe explain, give a little background. When we went, we went to a broker, a local broker, and looked at multiple different policies to see what would fit the needs and with the pricing, and looked at everything, how to combine the two. We also went and looked at what was historical here in town, what had been done previously. And we kind of narrowed it down on what seemed to make the most sense. Now, here, here's the tricky part. Because of those five, the five employees, there are a couple different ways that the insurance companies do quote, and I can't speak. I don't want to get out of my lane here, because I don't understand all the ins and outs. But what I can tell you is some of the quotes that you'll get from insurance companies, once you, once you get the quote from them, then everybody fills out a medical questionnaire. That medical questionnaire then goes to underwriting, and the quote you were given initially means nothing. It changes based upon the individual medical questionnaires. That kind of unpredictability doesn't work for us. So the second way is what they call, I believe, that may be what they call a street quote. And then the other kind of quote is what we got there. And that kind of quote there, the only way that the price changes is if the amount of personnel involved change. So there's no, no underwriting in terms of individual medical questionnaires, things like that. But where it gets tricky in providing that, that low-cost medical benefit is that if one of those five people, let's say you say, okay, we'll pay 70% employee, or 30%. And if one of those people out of those five says, I can't afford to do that. That's not affordable. It's not that affordable medical care that we were hoping that you would provide to us. And they drop out, that changes the rates, and the rates then go up. So there's not really any wiggle room in terms of the percentages, you know, the employee match, the town's contributions and things like that, because it's one of those sort of all or nothing type situations, because otherwise, the five people that are affected won't be eligible, period. Because again, if even one person hops out, then those rates, those rates aren't good. So I thought that was kind of important for you all to understand that. You know, I also wanted to say, you know, we hope that you think this is the right thing, because I know we certainly do as employees. You know, government, full-time government employees should be afforded affordable healthcare. And we're hoping that you see it that way too. I think it's important for the culture, and I think it's important for longevity, keeping and retaining the employees. Those are all part and parcel to the, your overall compensation package. And those are all things as an employer, and as the community's growing and things are changing, that I think will help, you know, keep good people in place. And I think that's important too for the town. So that's, that's my two cents. I just wanted to kind of add that in there. I should say our two cents, and Tina, anything I missed that you'd like?
Yeah, you covered it. Somebody dropped.
And see, that's like with that medical questionnaire. We're not all the same age.
Exactly.
So how, what if someone older than you has a higher rate and they can't, they can't afford it?
They can't afford it. That's, that's what we found, and that's why the one we went with here, that was part of what got us to where we're at now. This doesn't change. There's no medical questionnaires. This doesn't change. Unless one or more of those five people opt out, then it's unaffordable for everybody, because it goes up even higher. So that was the deal. And by the way, this is what was done previously as well. It was a 90-10 split with the town. So there was already a precedent for that. And then, you know, the other thing that's worth saying is this is an issue of where do we find the money at? The money has already been budgeted for. It's there, it exists, and we're not asking for anything outside of that, that money, so... Any other questions for me? I can help basically.
So Henry Rose said the, the first person on the list, he's not full-time. So really, it would only be considered for employees, for, for employees currently.
Currently, the...
That was taken, yeah, that was taken into account.
Yeah, it was. That was taken into account in June for him.
Yeah.
They just, they added...
And is there waiting time after June for him to?
No.
Nope.
Because it'd be a qualifying event?
Yeah.
Change of employment.
Taken.
Change of full-time employment.
This is based, because he's not going to get interns told to do...
Right.
That's correct. That's all I had?
Technically, I don't know what the original council before us, whether it was a 90-day waiting program or what.
I really don't know what that was.
Sarah told us that... If you guys decide to vote, I can email her today and it starts the first.
But it can't start anywhere in the mail. It's always the first.
It'll be the first of the month for the start.
That's how ours is at work too. So like, if I, if I hire somebody on, what is this, March? If I hire on March 13th, they don't start until April. For, for me, I put a 90-day, I put a 90-day clause in, but I could do it immediate. I chose to do 90 days because... It's not municipal. It's a little different. And so they would start the first of April. It's cleaner for billing too.
And these amounts, are that, that's not included down on the vision, is it? These are just medical?
Dental vision is an option.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be optional for the employee.
So, and that isn't? So does that include short-term disability?
Yes, it does include short-term disability.
And life?
Life is optional.
But says employer pay.
Yeah, that's what, if we...
If they choose to pay for their own life?
Yeah, if I will not pay for somebody's life insurance, nobody's ever paid for mine.
But that doesn't, that's on these, on these reports, that doesn't include short-term disability.
On these reports?
I believe she added it afterwards in the quote that you see up there.
There's, there's no way that this would be short-term disability. That which will cause the... 90-10, that's an off.
Employer would pay on what she gave us the other day would be life insurance, but I didn't know that. I'm doing this now. Short-term disability and medical.
But not life?
Life is optional.
It would be legal.
Yeah, I would rather it be optional, so that would change. You would take that $100.50 monthly off.
I agree that life and dental and vision should be optional.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, this is strange, because if you look at employee and spouse, it's $1,900. Employee and children, it's $100, but it's cheaper.
What are you looking at? 90-10?
No, that's $210.
Look at children.
Then unfortunately.
Then employee and family.
Only one of us has children that's a minor. And that's matters. The rest of us are all adults.
Okay.
And his wife would carry that insurance, is what he said, right?
I mean, I just thought that was strange, that for a child and the cost of labor. I guess you put debt to work, right? Child labor. Because generally, when you have children...
So this...
It's a big part of our work.
Children's, right, and medical. This, this. All three?
Which one would be all three?
The...
The employer, the employer costs, employer costs.
Employer, but it does...
I don't remember if it's just a medical cost right here.
Because it doesn't say.
Right.
It's going by the word. It's cushy.
So is this, is that... The month. So that don't even help.
Now, this is...
These are five weekly leaflets.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so take this amount times 26, divided by 12. So this, this amount here is... So the amount on the sheet that's provided is just the medical cost.
On here.
A map.
That's just the medical cost. That doesn't include the...
Short-term disability?
Yeah.
That would be $218. That's on the paperwork that she gave to you guys when she was here. This paper.
Right, but it's not included here.
I saw most of it. So this, the whole deal would be 4,800?
No, that's just the medical. And the short, it's up at the top. So if we take life, dental, and vision off of there, that number's gonna go down, in my opinion.
Sure.
Because that's what it's... Yeah, because now we're making it optional. The two in the middle...
Be 300 and some dollars less.
Dental and vision are already voluntary, so you just take off the 100.
Well, you gotta add in the short-term.
Right.
But I'm still taking the 100 and 107 and the 41?
Yeah.
No, not the 100. We believe in the life, huh?
No, life is...
Life is coming off.
Coming off.
Yeah, life will come off.
Okay.
Yeah, those top three, but that will come off.
So I actually will pay 594 a month. 595 a month. So I take it's going to be 20% of that. Is that, and then this is 90%. So this, if I had that, that, and that, this is...
No, because it's a 20%.
This equals this, and then that is that amount.
With the 20%.
That's out, so we pay 595 a month. For personal. So we pay. No, no, wait, that's, wait, wait. That's per month. This is by weekly.
It's not always two weeks and a month.
Twenty-four, it's twenty-six, pay periods by weekly, so twenty-four by monthly.
So you should take it, if you're trying to figure out the monthly payment, take the dollar amount times twenty-six pays, divided by twelve, there's your monthly payment.
Okay.
Divided by twenty-six. So.
How did you get that, correct that?
I don't see no wonder.
What did you do? The math and skills, just the math.
She's adjusting for inflation.
No, I'm not, mine's deflated. So this is per month divided by. Two hundred and ten. That's per year divided by twenty-six. So that's per. That's per. That's what I did, per. By weekly.
What's the amount you can look at?
So it's a hundred dollars and sixty-two cents bi-weekly. That's all together for short-term, I'm just looking at short-term disability. And then.
So what are we, uh, how are we feeling about this?
It's over there. Just one second.
So what's the cost difference between ninety percent versus seventy percent?
Oh, that's a big challenge.
An expense, pardon, two expenses.
That's back to the part, so it automatically kicks out.
Should we actually draft? A document showing what it would be?
The right thing?
We've got, we got.
This, I looked at it, it's.
This is what?
But that, those quotes would be based upon all five people still being in, and that would not happen.
This is the cost of each employee. And each one drastically goes up.
So it goes to. That's the employee, this is the amount now.
They just keep, right.
So what else?
Yeah. Right, because this, this is just the medical, it's just the rest of the.
Just the medical, yeah, it's the short-term disability.
That, this is not, this does not include short-term disability.
Yeah, with that, that's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So with the ninety-ten, that'd be, with the short-term disability, it would be. Five thousand and eighteen dollars and seventeen cents.
Yeah, that's a month.
And this was, so that's. Five grand is what it, and that's budgeted in.
The insurance money has not even, never, not been used in a year and three months. And it's all there.
And interestingly enough, apparently, that is less per person now than it was what was being paid when it was had previously.
But that income is still being dispersed somewhere.
It's not.
It's not income, it's, it's total.
That's just a budget, if you don't use it, if you don't use it.
And I haven't touched it, so it's not coming to me, if that's what you're saying.
So there's already money allocated, it's just not being used.
Yeah. And I, if you, if you remember, Jeanette, you weren't here, this was in January, I told you guys that I wasn't touching that insurance money. Cause I did not know where it went.
Right.
So I did not touch it, that money is sitting there.
So like, how much is in there?
Over forty thousand.
So that's not enough to cover for a year with the insurance?
But it's not gonna be a year, you gotta think about that too, cause then when I do budget in November, I can ask for more. On the budget, because we have more employees, then they only had two. And that was Mr. Craig and Mr. Nolan.
Tom was on this one?
As far as I was told today, yes.
So that's your yearly?
Mm-hmm.
So we would be ensuring from April one on, and then I would budget for them, for us, that, the difference.
That how did that?
Oh, yeah, so. It's pretty close.
Nine minutes.
Yeah, let's. Right in there. Yeah, but also for that, remember the police department, part of its budget is for.
Health insurance.
Compensation of health insurance, so technically.
We could move that out of that department.
Because we budgeted for that when we did the budget.
Yep.
Okay, folks, we gotta figure something out. Money is there. That's the way I feel, I feel like the money's there. It's not.
It's not gonna go away.
It's not gonna come away from the water bill or anything like that.
It's not gonna, and it doesn't ever go away. It's just gonna be sitting there.
It's growing.
Yeah, because it's in the budget. So I'm asking for the same percentages then, for the insurance as I did last year. So every line item that you guys approved, that insurance is in there. I just kept looking, it just keeps growing.
But ninety-ten, I know we'll get, like, we can ask for, for next year.
Ninety-ten, if you do anything less than that, or more, or whatever, if you're, if you do eighty-twenty or whatever, then you're gonna, and I shouldn't even say it, cause I'm one of them. And, but my opinion on the other four, we're failing R and P's.
I mean, eighty-twenty, I mean, it's still good insurance.
Yeah, but it's unaffordable.
It's unaffordable?
For some, yes, it's unaffordable.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, you have to remember what some of the people who are working here are making. So maybe it's not something you can relate to, that's good, that's good news, but.
I mean, I'm a single person, I pay my insurance, just like everybody else does, so.
I understand what you're saying, but some people, some people have looked at it and said, if it goes to this, I can't afford it. And they would even went to the point of the eighty-eight sixty-two bi-weekly is unaffordable. We gotta take into consideration that we don't know their issues.
Situation.
Situation.
Well, the whole idea of Affordable Care Act is to provide affordable.
Affordable insurance.
Health insurance.
Yep.
So, but what is covered this year, insurance will go next year, so we're not gonna have enough money, like.
If I budget for more money, then yes, we're gonna, it will happen. And I can budget, cause I'll know how much it's gonna be for the full year, so I can ask for that amount of money.
But we won't know what it is going to be from April of next year, when we do budget this year.
But if I ask for three percent, four percent, five, always ten percent.
Cause it all depends too on how much of that insurance is used.
Well, we're all old, and we use medical. Of all kinds.
And he's got, you said the money's in the police department.
Yeah, yeah, there isn't, yeah, there is enough money. Without question to meet the obligation, if, if it didn't change.
This year is the only year that we might kind of sure, is that what you're saying?
That won't even happen now, because the money, we already have the money for the police department budget.
So I mean, we've got enough to do this year, and then you budget the full amount for the next year.
Yes.
And if it increases. If it isn't given next year, what if they don't give us that much next year?
Who?
State.
Well, I don't think that the state is gonna take away our insurance. As long as I stay under a tax, tax, or we, I shouldn't say I, we stay under a tax levy, they're pretty much gonna say, here you go. As long as we don't affect our people.
They don't give us what we want, we can cut it.
And there's not, I mean, you know, here's another thing too, what's before here is not something that is just us. I mean, I, I would challenge you to find any other government agency, any surrounding jurisdiction anywhere, that doesn't, that doesn't provide it. And there are some that, that provide even better plans, some that may not quite as good, yeah, I mean, typically, in law enforcement, it's not usual for, for police departments. Uh, to, to, you pay a dollar a year for the same kind of insurance that we're looking at here, so, you know, I mean, there are some out there that's better, there are some that, that aren't as good. And I think what we try to do is just do the median and go down and find the best bang for our buck, and, and that's what I think that we put in front of you.
North pays one dollar, there we go.
Who?
The north, the officers up there pay one dollar.
But they're bigger.
No, same size as us.
They only have four officers?
Hmm?
They have more than, two full-time officers.
They have more than two full-time officers? I would not have, I tried not to bring it in. Okay, we need to move on.
Yeah, we need to move on. So I guess we can look at the fire department and then come back?
That's what you wanna do, cause I put it down with looking for your last, while it's soaking in your heads, for the. Tom did give a sorry.
Yeah.
Tom did give the metrics. Tom, you have anything to, you want to pass the thought, just the metrics?
So on this piece report, can we, on like, down below it says, like, all the M one, M two, can you write, like, how many, like, who went? Like, how many runs did you go on, or Matt went on, Gary went on, Eric went on?
I'll look into that.
Okay, we're ready for the, this fire department, I guess.
Mine's short and sweet, I send it in, should burn it out? We're done. Um, I really actually don't have any except for, I think, two big topics of debate tonight or, or conversation, not debate. One is, I'm still putting a pin in the conversation that was briefly brought up last month about radios, I'm putting a pin in that for a little bit longer, for a couple reasons. One is, um, I got some delayed feedback back from the county, um, project, and there's, I'm still waiting for one clear answer on. We're, we're definitely have to add some radios to the, to the department, even with the county project. But I'm trying to figure out what the best option is for us, um, to put our dollars forward. The other thing is, I, I haven't had time yet, but I do wanna get with Tom to make sure that his end of the town is covered also, as far as law enforcement. So that we're not, we're not buying new radios, and then they need new radios in two years, like, if the town's gonna do something, it's worth talking about it together to maximize the discount. And the financing rate, no sense in us financing radios, I know their squad cars, from my understanding, are fairly all new, but I, I have not had time to get with Tom. It's been on my, my list, I actually messaged with him, what was it, last week?
This week.
And I was out with the flu for a couple weeks, I'm trying to get caught up and just, hasn't happened. But, so, I'm gonna put a pin in that for a little bit longer, I'm getting headway, but I think some of it also might fall on the next topic of conversation, which some, somehow I inherited, I don't know how. But I have inherited the, the luck of the tornado siren, or lack thereof currently.
Inherited.
The board is still out to federal signal, to see if it's either A, repairable, or B, not. Obviously, we are in, um, storm central storm month, uh, IDHS and everybody's been pushing the tornado awareness all month. As I was sitting at the firehouse this morning, watching the news, I started getting messages about seven oh five from Amy. Where are we at with the tornado siren, as we're watching the news about, um, upcoming tornado siren warning statewide today? Whatever.
Do they actually have the?
So the board is at, the board is at federal signal, um, where in their line of to look at, I have no idea. I did email Gary and copied, uh, Amy on it, and he said, I don't know, I, I asked if there was any temporary solutions, he was fairly quick to say no. Um, it's a very expensive process to buy a new one, um, but it's also not a fast process, so Williamsburg just put a new one in. February, and it got finished, and that project started six months ago, so either way, even if I wanted to say, okay, let's spend twenty thousand dollars and buy a new siren tomorrow, it's not gonna be here next week. So, we're still in the late thing, I've thought a lot about what Amy's asked me. As far as the best way to, to warn residents, if a impending storm comes, now first of all, we are covered somewhat by Dublin's sirens, Cambridge and Persian. Which, my understanding, do work now, the problematic dispatch has been solved. The only reason we realized we had a problem here was Butterfingers over here started pushing too many buttons one day, the firehouse had set ours off. But ours did not go off the next day for the tornado, for the countywide test, or maybe it was the day before, maybe it got, maybe it was flopped. So then we realized that we had an issue on just our end, so they came and looked at it, and it's, our board was fried, probably a lightning strike would be my guess, but who knows? There, there's a couple options that I can think of to make it easy, one, or easier, one is to really push on the fire department's website, Facebook. Law enforcement and the town, and the, in Living with Milton, or everything, push as far as we can to get storm, uh, warnings set up on their phones. You know, residents, pretty much everybody has a mobile phone nowadays, I'm not saying everybody, pretty much. Other thing is, is the reach, you know, really hammer at getting the reach out there, we do get alerted by dispatch a little bit of ahead of time. But about the same as when you're getting a severe weather alert, is about the time our tones are going off, that there's severe weather in the area. That's the only other failsafe I could think of easily, I don't have a way to go out and just push a button and set off a siren that everybody's gonna hear in town. Um, I don't think that putting our fire equipment and personnel on the road, and having the stability to be able to do that personnel-wise all the time, to drive around and say there's a tornado warning. Maybe that would help possibly part of inside of town, but by the time we got a warning, got to the station, got in a truck and started driving around, we're not gonna make it all the way through town. Certainly not in township. Um, so I don't have the perfect solution, except for really push.
Reach alert.
Reach alert and, you know, the, the basics, you know, have your, have your, have your weather alerts turned on, if it's questioning about, um, weather-related incidents. And, and you know, just pay attention to the weather, we'll, we'll push out alerts, uh, ensure that Tom could through Facebook or that whoever is. That, that's the only option I have right now, I mean, even if you put all the fire trucks and all the police cars on the road, it's never gonna happen fast enough to be able to alert everybody, and nobody's, and not everybody's gonna hear it. They got the radio on, or stereo turned up, they're not gonna hear us driving around, there's a tornado warning, they're not gonna hear it. They got the radio on or stereo turned up, they're not gonna hear us driving around, there's a tornado warning, they're not gonna hear it. So I don't, I don't have the perfect solution, I I've been keeping up every week, ten days, um, with Federal Signal. They're a big company, they're worldwide, uh, they're into a lot of things, I don't, I don't know how fast I'll get an answer, I'm hoping sooner than later. That's, that's what I got, um, I did reach out to a contact at IDHS this afternoon to see if he, if he or they had any wonderful, great idea. I have not heard anything back, if I hear something back, I will absolutely communicate that with both Tom and Amy, because I think it's a multifaceted problem. It's not just an our problem, it's not just a them problem, it's not just a police problem, unfortunately, it's gonna be everybody's problem if we have a storm hit. But, I currently don't have an intelligent answer, however, again, if we end up having to look at something with radios. And such, not that it should come out of the fire department's budget, but that is an option that we could also wrap into the same. Financing problem or a project with Kenwood or somebody for for radios. So, I've been kinda dragging my feet on that too, that they tell us we need to spend X, Y, Z on. The repairs of this or replacement of that for the siren, that could potentially be in the same line as our radios and would be probably the same vendor. Chances are, um, and we could put it out to bid and get a couple options, but chances are it'd probably be through through a similar vendor. So I don't have great news there, I don't have a great township solution for that.
I think you, I think your answer is a good one, honestly, the more I think about it, I think we just need to take it a step further. And memorialize, uh, uh, an agreement on what we're going to do as a community as a compensatory measure. Until we get that fixed, and that's, I think, eighty percent of what you just said is perfect. We have to hit it from every angle, we have to get a Facebook message out, we have to get, can can you send research from home?
On the phone?
Okay, so we could, that means we could almost simultaneously, uh, if we had a notification chain. We would have somebody near the 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 media tools in order to get that out. That in combination with TV, the radio, and people's, people's cell phones. I think would sort of fill that gap as long as we had a plan in place.
Yeah, I think, I think in twenty twenty-five, social media kicks it off quicker than anything.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, in a lot of ways, as we've all seen recently.
Let's, let's do this, let let Matt and I put our heads together, um, and before the next meeting, by the next meeting. We'll come together with that line of exactly what's gonna take place and how it'll take place. So instead of just talking about it, we'll have a plan for what we're gonna do until we come up with a solution.
And I think what we'll do, I think what I'm gonna do, just cover us for the next thirty days. Is as soon as we, what I'll do is I'll put a group text message together, like, you, me.
Emergency King.
Chief Hensley and Sergeant Beetle, of, hey, got a storm warning, I'm gonna put something together. Or put something on Facebook and tag Milton Police on it, and then we can get it out, I mean, it seems like most of our posts when they're. Fairly important or imperative, like storm warnings, we we did some this winter, yeah, it seemed like they got shared up pretty quick. Um, even a couple times Wayne County Sheriff's grabbed a couple of ours about weather alerts, I I think that we do that for now, and we just get it out there, hey. You know, there there's the possibility of severe weather Thursday and Friday, I don't remember if that's true, so don't ever take that, but, you know, put. Right, hypothetically, Wednesday and Thursday, or Thursday and Friday, there's the possibility of increased risk, and we share that off in National Weather Service, not. One of these underground weathers, and not that there's anything wrong with them, but I think we take duly certified NOAA weather. And we put that out there of, hey, there's an increased chance of storm presence or risk this week, please pay attention, and we tag. The the three agencies immediately, and maybe you can throw a reach alert out, hey, there's an increased chance for storm activity. Whatever days it is, and we, we start with that for the next thirty days, and then we come up with a solution. In 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 today's social media world, there's gotta be some easy solutions to be able to blast that information out quickly. And I can ask, we can both ask around, both law enforcement and fireside, some P I Os and stuff of. Quick one-stop wonders to hit the button and make that happen, at least as a temporary solution.
I'll send out a reach alert tomorrow, ask your neighbor if they have reach alert, ask your neighbor if they're on the, no, from the fire department.
And and I'll, and we'll put, I'll get with a couple people and we'll put something out on Facebook tonight. Hey, if you don't have reach alert, please sign up here, maybe do it through Messenger, so then I can put in their personal cellphone numbers.
Yeah, they have to give me their number so I can put it in the system.
Right, but I'll, we'll get their, we'll collect their numbers through email or something, we'll put your email.
Okay, wow, great.
Then you can add them, we can, we can throw something, you'll get six thousand emails tomorrow, well, we only have what, ten or something residents, so what?
So there might be something on the internet as far as. The thing where we could use that and let citizens know that you could go to this website. And get minute-by-minute tracking.
I don't know, I think they'll, no, what I'm, I don't know, maybe, yeah, I mean, like, just go to weather dot com or, you know, pay attention to your local news. My concern about.
Orion, Fion.
Or get a weather rate, the state used to give them out for free, I don't know if they still do, I mean, I'll look that up tonight, and if they do have some links to get free, once again. I don't know how fast it takes, I don't wanna just put something out there and say, yep, shipping in July. Doesn't help us over the next thirty to forty-five, sixty days, again, I don't know, I mean, they could call me next week and say, hey, the board's fixed. Three hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents, and it's on its way, I have no idea. And I don't know if I'll even get a quote, they may just call and say, okay, it's fixed, it's on its way, and then get a bill in three weeks of.
Well, I wanna clear up the Facebook post from yesterday, it's not a financial issue.
I have no idea what I'm talking about.
The Facebook post about the the finance, I have to read it for sure, but it's not a financial issue, it was more so of. No communication with anybody telling us anything about how much it may cost, how much it could cost if you have to replace it. Nothing, they just came here, took whatever they had to off of the siren, and nobody communicated with anybody.
I didn't know it was gone.
It was a, it was a G O N.
Oh, I didn't see it. I I.
So that's, I just wanted to address that it's not a finan, they're at, everybody's saying on Facebook it's a financial, it, that's not it.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see this post.
Getting everybody protected and how can we get everybody protected, that's why I reached out to you and I talked to Tom about it multiple times. We've gotta come up with a plan, because we don't have a siren.
Something in the interim.
I, again, I didn't realize about this.
But Facebook is blowing it up to where it, they, everybody's saying it's a financial thing, well, Facebook, whoever you're anonymously. Decided to put that out there, that's a lie, it's more about your safety, not financial.
Yeah, I don't, even if we said, okay, it's ten thousand dollars to fix it, okay, order it, still aren't gonna be here tomorrow. It's still a few months out, I mean, it's, they don't just have those sitting on the shelf ready to ship. It's pieces, it's parts, it's components, nobody's seen CNN or paid attention to the news, there's these new things called tariffs. Um, unless somebody else knows of circuit boards and resistors and stuff being made here. Um, mostly that crap comes from a different country that currently has a new problem. And the boats aren't floating over here as quick as they used to, so that's out of my control. Federal Signal's a big company, they're out of, uh, University Park, Illinois, they make everything from the blinky lights on Tom's car, some of the blinky lights on our fire trucks. To, um, alerted devices for nuclear plants, to security, the security system that the D O D and Customs and Border Protection uses. So they got their fingers in a lot of crap, um, and our little circuit board, whatever, maybe it's this big, I have no idea, I never saw it. Um, is probably not, while it's number one on our priority list, it, I have no idea if it even ranges in the radar. It's, it's a RMA number to University Park, Illinois right now. I followed up with Gary, uh, Amy was on the emails there today, yesterday, and he said the same thing, I, I, they have it, they received it, great.
Just people knowing there's action being taken.
I was hoping that he would tell me that they had a used one or something, that that we could use or lease or borrow or buy or whatever. That that didn't seem to come to fruition, it sounds, sounds like we're in the middle of that timeline of. The electronics of the late nineties, early two thousands are quickly fading out, which is probably the era of ours. The problem is it doesn't plug and play with the era of twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-five, which is, I I think some of the issue we're in. And they don't have a quick, easy, okay, you just buy the box and stick it in there, because this box, the new box, doesn't connect to. The old siren, because this one's all digital and that one was all, whatever. Um, I've learned more about tornado sirens in the last five weeks than I ever planned on learning my entire life. But, um, I I don't have a, an immediate solution, the only solution I have right now is, is unfortunate social media, and I really like to push people. I think in our best interest, pushing people to Indianapolis-based weather would help us. As I know some of the the issues that I ran into running a commands, uh, scene command up in Cambridge last year. A lot of people said, well, we never saw this coming, because they were watching W H I O and stuff out of Dayton, which they've got about a, they've got about a two, two and a half hour. Delay, so, you know, I think that we need to push Indianapolis, um, weather, I think we need to push. Watch your local TV out of Indianapolis, I'm not gonna name certain ones, 'cause then I'll be in trouble for saying one over the other. But I think that watching the Indianapolis news and watching the weather based out of NOAA's weather based out of Indianapolis. Weather bug would behoove people in our area faster, usually, generally, most of the storms come from the west, traveling east, especially with.
They still watch Japine, below Japine, just to say, oh, in your area, there is tornado warning.
Yeah, and then then up in the little corner, we can watch the the activities. So, the only other thing I, I, and I did not get a chance to check on, but I will check tonight, is about the storm radios. Um, and just try to push some information out, you know, local stores are selling for nineteen ninety-nine, or buy one on Amazon, or. That's all I can do, and really, the people out in the township should probably do that anyways, 'cause the chances of them hearing the siren if we have eighty mile an hour winds. Off of the siren project, last month was a semi-relatively quiet month as far as the responses. I think five EMS and two, two motor vehicle accidents. We had no, no real fire responses. The big thing I wanna point out is, um, Chief Hensley, Josh has been working diligently on billing the, um. Accident responses and has had very good luck doing so. I don't have the paper in front of me, I think it's a little over five thousand dollars that's been collected this year, your date. And then he just sent another bill to the tractor trailer that decided to park across state route one, a couple weeks ago, knocked telephone poles down. Um, we finally just got the crash report at, uh, for that, and everything downloaded, and he just sent another bill for, oh, seven o'clock. For a couple thousand dollars, I think it was twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-six.
So, that's been helping, uh, we haven't really used any of the money except for, we did start the association, like we had talked about. We used six hundred dollars out of that account to pay the IRS. Incorporation fund, or whatever fee that they request or require, um, now it's sitting in the review process of the IRS. Which, I have no idea how long that's gonna take, uh, which will help dramatically with grants, because it's five oh one C three. Me and Dwight need to get back together now that I'm not on death's doorstep and try to get some work on the generators, we've got some leads, we've got some ideas. Again, I've got a target price from, um, Evolus Mechanical out of Indianapolis, about seventeen to twenty thousand. For the the generator at the firehouse to operate everything, but that also included a new, um, breaker box, an updated one. So we've got a little more work to do on that, the one place, we gotta wait until, well, now Nathan, all is back to work, so the, uh, the one. He just went back to work, like a weekend.
I seen a meeting at noon, so I guess I worry.
So, uh, now that he's back, um, the electrician in town might be a little more nervous, or in Cambridge. The other place, um, I checked with, they stopped selling because they're having a hard time getting them, because of shortage of parts and pieces. Um, so, we're, and we're kinda stuck in no man's land of in between Indianapolis and in between Dayton, and whose services are our area. So that's still on the radar, but it hasn't been in the top three, we got bogged down a little bit with some other stuff this month, and then illnesses and. We started our fire academy, so we have a lot of people going through that, so that's been. And they they did a bunch of pumper training last night with one of the trucks, and we're doing some draft training. The only other big thing that I did not get on the weekly, or the monthly report, excuse me, was in with Tom's assistance. I've got three or four ordinances that I'd like to look at the town adding, definitely one for a burn ban. That I don't have to wait for the county to initiate a burn ban, burn ban, burn ban, because that's. We're usually the slowest county in the state to initiate a burn ban, generally because of the farmers, and I know that's gonna ruffle a little bit of feathers. Not so much, I don't think, here, but in the township possibly, but outside of here, there was, there's a lot of pushback about that, but I definitely need to. I've got the wording and everything from Centerville and a couple other towns, so I wanna get that to you guys for the next workshop. I think we should do something similar for a trash burning policy in town. Because same thing, the wrong gust of wind on the wrong day, we could be having a rough, rough afternoon, and, I mean, I. The fire department has minimal enforcement, we have to call our brothers in blue over there, um, which is fine by me. But we need to, we need to come up with some wording and some, some implementation, whether that's a monetary fine, or, I I don't know what that looks like, that's a. That's a question for you guys, or something.
Well, I want to put fire pits in the park.
I'm not opposed to that, but but I'm not opposed to people burning leaves and stuff in their backyard, but on a day that there's fifty mile an hour winds, it's not a great day. It is illegal in the state.
You gotta be right, have to realize.
Yeah, well, but it is illegal, what a lot of people don't realize is it is actually illegal to burn your trash in the state of Indiana, if you're burning cardboard, it is against the law. If you were burning your paper plates and stuff that you ate off of, it is against the law. It very clearly says natural wood products in the I C code, see, I've learned from your I C code. We need a state, it's a state law, so.
Typically, those ordinances reflect that as well.
Correct.
Usually, usually will say, don't, but it is no, only recreational fires, I think that's how they word it.
Chris, does that sound pretty cool?
It does, and it's not something I have a lot of experience with, but.
That counter prohibits that from burning trash, uh, 'cause burning trash is bad for everybody, as we know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Stuff that there, that should be burned in the first place.
And 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 I wanna really specifically look at targeting weather problems, because that's where the burn ban, that's what the burn ban is made for is. So that the fire department can dictate, whether it's me or him, can say, hey, it's supposed to be forty-five mile an hour winds. We already under a red flag, town of Milton has implemented a burn ban until Saturday. If you have to burn stuff for your farm or anything, notify the fire department prior, we'll put our cellphone number on there, the department number, so we know. That way, if we don't get ten phone calls, or smoking, the trees, or whatever, and I'm not talking about, like, we had an incident the other day where a lady. Had a cigarette fall on the ground, cut a fire, a bunch of cardboard and crap, because it was Sunday night before the trash went out. I'm not talking about stuff like that, but I wanna be able to say, if we didn't get rain for three weeks, like, last, what was that, October, November? It took us, in this, in this county, it took us three weeks behind all the other counties to put a burn ban in effect. I wanna be able to protect the town and the township by saying, hey, it's supposed to be fifty mile an hour winds. We're talking, it hasn't rained in three weeks, no, no burning, or humidity, you know, I mean, the state, the state sends me. Thousands of emails a year for that stuff, I think that we should implement something like that. The other thing is, uh, we're gonna have to do something about, again, this is a, a me, Josh and Tom issue, but. Definitely have some parking issues as far as people parking in front of fire hydrants, and we need to, especially coming this summer with a project. If we have hydrants blocked, it's gonna hinder problems, so we just need to push that reminder out, we'll, we'll do a social media blast, like, stay away from the can. Maybe I'll pick up a picture of F D N Y and how they run hoses through cars, because I will, I will do that. If I need to, um, I don't want to, and I don't want to claim, but if I need to get water on a fire, then that's, that's the plan. And then I've also gotta draft up, like, to draft up a mutual aid agreement for Dublin at least, and if if Cambridge decides to. Um, communicate, I, this whole mutual aid mess started with, I wanted to add departments to our mutual aid. There seems to be this county-wide thought that I just wanted to cut department ties, and that's not, that's not the case. I wanted to add departments to our mutual aid system, so when our tones went off, automatically five departments would get toned out. I was told that's not possible in this county, county dispatch is not willing to do that. Though, every other state, every other county in the state will do that, just not our county. Though every other state, every other county in the state will do that, just not our county. So I therefore chose that the departments that are further away need to be notified faster and that have more personnel and more equipment to get us water and stuff, especially with the upcoming hydrant prob- projects. That Bentonville and um Centerville were our better options. Centerville has thirty plus firefighters, fifteen of them or fifteen plus of them are firefighter one and two. Bentonville has, I don't remember, twenty-two, twenty-four people, um they have three tankers. We have, we have a lot of resources there. We will immediately request on the radio for Dublin and Cambridge City to be requested for any type of fire response. So if somebody's calling that they have a smoke detector going off and it hits a structured fire designator at dispatch level, whatever officer is acknowledging a tone to dispatch will request Cambridge City and Dublin to be dispatched as well. Dublin has asked that we do a mutual aid agreement, I don't have an issue with that, so we will, we will get that drawn up or that we agree to respond to them, they agree to respond to us for no money, happy days, go lucky, move on. So at no time am I not requesting any other agencies or our department. But closer isn't always better with skill sets and qualifications. And I want the people that are farther away having the heads up advance, because whether it's them or them or it's us going there, we're only five minutes away from each other. Centerville's ten minutes, yep. I need them to have that extra two minute heads up before I get on the radio or he gets on the radio, whoever it is, running out our door of our house saying, please send, please send me Cambridge City and Dublin, if it's up in the northern part of the area, it'll be Hagerstown and Greens Forks. That's just how mutual aid works. So I wanted to clear that up with the town council, because I know we've had some social media and other texts, conversations, phone calls, smoke signals, whatever. There is nothing on my end, I I wanna work with every department within fifty miles of here.
Isn't there Hollinsburg or something like that?
Hollinsburg's over on the Ohio side, so that's north northwest, the northeast corner of the county. They are part of our mutual aid, they come to our meetings every month, they're very active in our association. Um we've been going to the associ- association meetings for the county every month, I don't think we've missed one, oh, we might have missed last month.
Yeah.
Um I think I was sick and he was not at work, so we missed last month's. Um next month's is actually at Milton's station, so we are not not trying to work with anybody. Um that also being said, I think it's really important that I point out that we have a very good relationship with Reed. And I do not want our town, and I do, and I will not allow our department to go down the rabbit hole of other departments of not agreeing that we respond to medical calls or thinking we shouldn't. Does it increase our run load? Yes. Does that help us? No. Everybody's saying, oh, all these medical calls help smaller departments with grants and stuff, it's absolute bull, does not help. So if you look at NIFRS, which is the federal reporting standards, um reporting system. The only thing that helps in federal grants is designators for structure fires and wildland fires. So they're coded by numbers, one hundreds, two hundreds and three hundreds. One hundreds are structure fires, two hundreds are miscellaneous rescue and wildland fires, three hundreds are medical calls. Probably ninety-five percent of our calls are what we call code three twenty-one, which is medical miscellaneous, including MVA, which is motor vehicle crash, motor eclazin. Excluding fatality, which is three twenty-two, three twenty-three. Those don't help us with grants, those don't help us with anything, so. Our relationship with Reed is really good. Reed and our county has a really good thing compared to a lot of the counties out there that don't have coverage. We have ALS medics. If somebody has a cardiac event, we only can do CPR. And we're doing manual CPR, unless you want me to spend thirty thousand dollars and get a Lucas device that is guaranteed to give great CPR. I'm doing it, you're tired by the end of two minutes, if nobody here's ever done CPR on a human being, you are exhausted by two minutes of CPR. Of high quality rescue breaths and CPR, he's a paramedic, he can tell you. Firefighter, I mean, at the airport, my favorite firefighter is firefighter Lucas. We snap him on, they're gonna do compressions perfectly, two to two and a half inches deep. One, one, every thirty seconds, I mean, they they have, it's a computer, it's smart, it's smarter than me, it does it equally. We don't have that kind of money, we don't have drugs.
Hundred to a hundred and ten compressions a minute.
No more than two to two and a half inches deep, I mean, but the machine knows that. We don't have cardiac drugs we can give, nor are we licensed to do that. Wayne County has a pretty good thing with Reed having Atlanta, advanced life support medics right down the road. And even if they're not right there, they're coming from Hagerstown or they're coming from Centerville or Richmond, that's not that far. You look at Henry County, they're coming from downtown Newcastle and going all the way to Knightstown. Or they're going all the way up to Moreland or some of these other outlaying areas, and they may not have first responders that show up. So really our county is pretty lucky. I mean, I know, I know Reed's at hospital, I know that's that I know that, I know there's a lot of politics that go behind that, but overall, for the county, it's a pretty good thing. I'm not saying that the previous providers didn't have ALS, but now it's required and that's the one thing that Reed does bring to the table, they bring a lot of community outreach that I think people don't pay attention to. And our department enjoys working with them, so some people have asked me, well, are you guys gonna do the same thing as some of the other departments and not agree with it? That is not our policy or our procedure, our our position, our position is we agree with and we will support Reed. And they support our volunteer departments a lot more than they realize if you communicate with them. So again, pointing that out is some of the side effects of some of these other items that have come up over the last few weeks. But overall, they have a pretty good program and they have, they have a really good group of of people. And I think they get a bad rap just because automatically generally you're going to Reed. So they got you on both ends, they get it, but that's part of business also, but you can always request, and I think that's some of the things is that town, the town people need to if they wanna go to Newcastle, they need to tell us that. When we get there and we ask like, hey, where do you wanna go, don't just tell me, I don't know, I don't care, because you're gonna go to the closest facility. If you're a trauma alert, eh, you're probably not going to Newcastle, you're probably going to Reed, be the helicopter, I mean, they they have a good system. Uh and the the people that run that program are very good, they live down at our station. Couple weeks ago, we spent three hours going over ambulance familiarity so that newer people know what to grab, where to grab. Doesn't mean they're a hundred and ten percent all the time, but it's better, better than what we had. Two weeks ago is better than what we had a month ago, it's better, certainly better than what we had a year ago.
So how many, I'm gonna switch gears, I mean, how many hydrants do you think we need on State Road one leaving Milton?
That way or this way?
This way.
How far we go? How far does the water system go?
Just short of paving, out paving.
Palace paving, just short of that, probably is it?
I've, we'd have to look up the ISO rating or I ISO requ- uh recommendation, but we can get that.
Yeah, they should be so ever.
There, there is an ISO requ- uh not requirement, there is an ISO recommendation for base off X number of feet. I don't know what that is.
Now, I'm thinking, okay, hydrant to both sides of the road, because you don't want.
I wouldn't, I'm just gonna close the road anyways.
We're gonna shut it down.
I drive through the.
Chances are, we're gonna shut it down, we're gonna put a truck across both sides, we're gonna shut it down anyways, I mean, I don't want somebody driving through the scene, if I've got hose laid out. If we're on the same, if, let's say we're on the east side of one, we're fighting a fire on the east side of one, I'm shutting all of one down. Happen. We're gonna have too much equipment out there, we have too many people, we have hoses deployed everywhere, I don't care if I'm stretching across the road or not.
Well, I mean, one of the things.
I mean, what what's everybody do when they're driving by the scene? What else? Real deal problem now, stopping and recording and it's all over Facebook, so if yours, let's say you live at East, you know, whatever, right next to Palace Paving, you wanna be out dinner in Indianapolis and looking at your phone and all of a sudden Facebook Live, your house is on fire, you don't even know yet? I'm I'm a, I'm a bigger fan of shutting the road down. It eliminates the concern of them gawking, Facebooking and everything else and running one of us over. It also eliminates, if it's a fatality fire, we're bringing out fatalities, it's ju- it's just easier, it's safer.
We need to confirm, one of the things that we have, especially at the north end, we have what they call dead ends in the water. Doesn't make a loop.
Right.
So what happens, the person on the dead end is gonna get all the crud and corrosion if it's not flushed on the way.
So we need to put a hydrant at the end, is that?
So, well, yeah, they do that now, but if you create a loop, which probably means line boring underneath one up there towards the north end. Create a loop, now you've got a constant loop of water just flowing, you get rid of the crud from the citizens. But also, if there's a line breakage, you can shut part of it off in one direction and get it from the other.
ISO recommends. I'm an operation guy, so I've got a lot of this at my disposal. Uh a maximum of eight hundred feet in residential areas, separation on hydrants, commercial areas, five hundred is your maximum spacing. So maximum.
And see, behind the, like at the ballpark, okay, there is six inch water lines there. It runs in behind all those houses on the west side. So to get a hydrant, you would have to, we'd have to get approval from the citizen to dig through their yard and put a hydrant out front along State Road one, if you wanted to put hydrants on that side versus put them all on the east side.
Does the east side have an easement and we can just go up the east side without it?
Yeah, sit behind the houses.
No, on the east side.
That is east side. There's an easement behind the houses. There's an easement behind the houses, you could pull into Nick Elderson, go behind the houses.
Okay. So. How many hydrants are out that way or now? Joe?
That's why when I was asking.
And it's getting ready to, that's gonna be part of the expansion of the water system, is out that way?
This side, that side's already been done, but that's why I was gonna, I ask you placement of hydrants to make sure. I don't know if there's any even out there.
There's one right at the Baldine entrance, that's the last one.
So there's nothing on the east side at all?
There's one back there in that yard, I said, one of them.
I don't know.
They got a flush hydrant, but it means it's.
I thought they replaced the flush hydrant with a regular hydrant.
Yeah, just a little bit bigger.
So how far past the Baldine is the the new water line gonna be going?
No, it's already gone out that way.
On the west side?
Either side.
East side is done.
So we'd have to come to the west side and put hydrants in.
There's about, they put in like seven hundred feet of new water line.
So five on, five houses on the west side.
I think what they're saying is we, I think the quote. I think the original quote for the water system has some extra hydrants, that, but installing a hydrant is fairly inexpensive in comparison to.
But I don't think it included like going out north of State Road one, Wagner and like Cemetery Road.
Well, the choice was.
The three or four.
The the extra ones, that's why um Whitney asked you to figure it out, placement.
We'll look, we'll look at the map tomorrow, or Thursday night, we're, me and Josh are gonna make the station. We'll look at the book and the project and we will report back before next council meeting. And we'll probably have to call and pick your brain and your brain specifically.
Where does the city actually end?
Baldine.
At the Baldine?
And the last house on the right is Nick Elders.
Oh, we should put a hydrant in that here.
The fence at the north of the Baldine and driveway is the cutoff.
Any future plans of annexation or anything further?
Well, I mean, I think, yeah, we're gonna get new water lines, hopefully we can create a loop, which is good for everybody.
So right now, the east side's already been done, right?
They got done last year.
The west side hasn't been done.
They're being done this year.
They're being done this year, but the east side and the west side don't connect currently. And the plan is to do that in this project or that'd be a separate project?
I seriously doubt if that was even considered.
So that's a project for another day.
Yeah, and on the west side.
And the line ends where on the west side?
Five houses head, six houses out.
So we'd have to try to find out from one or two people that way if we could possibly put a hydrant in their yard.
So the only hydrant going out north is at the Baldine. That's, I mean, on both, on either side is the Baldine.
The last one that's on the road out to Baldine.
I don't know if there's one on the east side.
No, there's not.
Right, well, I got all the maps, we'll have to look at it.
Right.
We'll look at it Thursday and get an answer. Because I think if I remember right, talking with Whitney that day, there's what, like four or five extra hydrants that are priced into the project that we was gonna say if we wanna here, there, here, there, or just lay it over in case somebody runs one over. That was part of the conversation was if we wanted to add any anywhere or I would say the one, the one other driving factor is what's the I've heard rumors and could, is this gonna become a gas station?
That's a rumor, that's just a rumor.
Because if that's gonna happen, we're gonna have to think about some other hydrants.
I get Facebook, can I ask a question?
I know.
Or they'll have to think about.
That's worked out well for me today. I asked one simple question on Facebook today and I got my butt kicked in, so anyways.
That's why I don't post.
That's why I don't, I don't post in my official capacity.
I didn't, I didn't in my official capacity. I don't have an official capacity, I'm just Matthew Bartlett.
This is my happy birthday. Learned my lesson.
Any questions for me?
No, I think that catches us up, because I had the decision on the generator and you always talk, already talked about that, the only other in uh unfinished, I had uh Quentin still wants to know uh if we could check on front tires and brake light replacements on the dump truck. So we have to make a, that's not gonna be over, what, five, six hundred?
It might. Well, so we 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 get them now, we learned pretty quickly on our first, yeah, they're government contract tires and it's a set price. And like, it costs maybe seven hundred and fifty bucks to put them on, to put.
And he's only asking two.
Suit tires.
They only wants two.
On police cars, which are more expensive, so I think you could do it.
Tires and brake light replacement?
Brake light replacements.
Brake light or brake line?
He said brake light.
Huh, he said light.
They're not um the electric, he like he told us before, the electrical. He can't, but he chose that list and they just went and took it over there, that and this.
I thought it was just sorting out because of the electrical, like there's an electrical issue.
Possibly. Possibly. So tires and brake light replacement on the dump truck.
Concern of each.
Nathan says it's been at one thirty.
Same key needs fixed.
It cost me a grand just to push four tires on Silverado, yeah.
Yeah, on the water.
So do you want motion to replace these tires and these brake lights or light replacements or whatever?
Or make them, oh, I didn't make them up.
Well, don't we need a quote?
So we know. The quote is gonna be standard. Greens Fork line and everybody has the same stuff.
Yeah, doesn't matter where you go. You have contract tires.
Okay, cuz I.
I'll make a motion.
Say it, make the motion.
All second.
All in favor? All right, motion passed. Okay, are there any updates from council that we wanna go through before we go back? Let's go back to the insurance, we don't need to move it, but I can't make the motion.
Does the fire department get dismissed from this conversation?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do.
Good luck.
We're gonna need it.
We're volunteers.
Can you get it up?
I'll put in two more hours, I'm gonna request insurance.
Bye.
Good luck.
Some money there.
Yeah.
That we got, based on what's been quoted to us. We're not spending all of it, a portion of it, correct?
We'll spend all of it, but and we'll get some from the police department, it's in their budget already.
Okay.
So what, they'll make up the difference. And then next year, I'll be asking for an increase.
For an inflationary increase. Otherwise, it just sits there and does nothing?
Nothing, just sits there, does absolutely nothing.
I'm getting this a look.
My looks are sealed.
I mean. I guess the question, well, where is that, can you say where somebody comes from? I guess the question, well, where does that, can you say where the money comes from, is it from the?
Uh, it's just in our budget, so it's probably coming from everybody.
From everybody?
What do you mean everybody, Wayne County everybody?
County, taxes, everybody, all that money comes to everybody.
And in the past, we're not taking our share of the pie. That's, that's just my opinion, because I mean, where's it gonna go if we don't use it?
It just sits there. It's been sitting there for years.
You say it rolls over.
And we, any money that is in our budget, any money, it never goes away, it just sits there.
It's just been there for years, we only have forty dollar, forty thousand dollars.
I don't know what it was previously, I just know what it is today.
Because there were two people that were on full-time health insurance, I'm pretty sure.
And I'm sure, and I know that in the budget from previous, at least the last two years, that's been on the budget.
I don't know if Mikey was on.
I'm not sure.
Or not, but I hope.
Probably wasn't achieved that long.
But he doesn't.
Oh, he was a, he was a.
He was a town employee.
Oh, that's, okay.
I'm willing to throw it out there as an option. Ninety-ten? Well, I was thinking more eighty-twenty.
Then everybody will be out.
Then everybody will be out, so it's.
Because it's not affordable to some, and if we lose one.
It was still set there.
Yeah, but this is, let me explain this part. If four of us want the, still can afford the insurance, one person can't, that insurance just increased because that one person dropped off. So it's still not a benefit. Then, because then, and once it increases, everybody's gonna say no. And then we fail our employees.
So what about the other end of the table, what's your thoughts?
So, how, Tina, how is she full-time?
Uh, insurance, Sarah told you this, insurance.
Thirty-six hours.
I said thirty-six, but she said thirty, insurance is thirty hours, it makes you full-time.
And what, so what, how, what's the hours for the so many hours that she works?
She works thirty-six hours a week.
But are we open thirty-six hours a week?
Well, yeah.
Not enough.
Yeah, we are.
Now.
We, no, we open at seven, seven-thirty, every day.
But is that, is that set, or is that because you guys come in?
That's because, um, that's what's on the website, and that's what we've been following, literally.
But that's not what's on the, um,
No, I see, I think.
Utilities, that's not, that's not on your ti- your utilities records?
I, I, I'm not gonna sit here and argue, but she still works thirty. If it's five hours a day, she works five days a week, or six hours a day, it's five days a week, that's thirty. And she get, we get our hours, believe me, get our hours. But if she drops off, or Quentin, or Matt, or Tom, or myself, price of insurance just went up.
So you guys already have it set that you guys will all take it if it's ninety-ten? Yeah, everybody said that they would take it if it was ninety-two.
But eighty-twenty, you're not gonna consider it.
I, I'm not gonna say that.
I can't speak for anybody, I can't speak for anybody.
Yeah, I'm not gonna speak for that. But I do know that there were some that said, I can't afford that, I can't do that eighty-twenty, which then means it would go up to a price where even the others that could have afforded eighty-twenty now can't afford that, that's why it's kind of an all or nothing.
That's the only issue that I see, and I've heard, if one person, just one. And it doesn't matter if it's the youngest or the oldest, it does not matter.
So if we take insurance, this is just for employee only, we will not cover any, if it's employee plus.
They pay.
They pay a hundred percent of that difference.
Plus what?
Huh?
Spouse or kids.
Spouse and kids.
Correct.
Family.
Correct, yeah, it, it's worded as employee only.
Oh, on our, yeah, on the quote, it's.
So if you add it, so I wanted to add my.
You're paying a hundred percent for.
Yeah, the employees pay that piece of it.
Oh, I get what you're saying.
A little bit more cluttering.
Yeah.
I mean, that's an option, you, you could also offer a percentage of the other people that you add, but that's not how, it just so happens that everybody in that situation is would be employee only.
Yeah, is employee only.
Because in, in the past, when we had a smaller group, there was medical insurance available.
And it was, yeah, and, and I think they, I don't, I don't say it, because I don't know for sure, but I do know it was ninety-ten then.
Yeah.
And that they were paying more than what this one would be employed individual several years later.
I think.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Ladies first.
No, you're fine.
I was taught that way.
Go ahead.
I mean, I think we need to spend the money. It's not doing anybody any good work, that.
Don't spend it, lose it too. Probably gonna lose it anyway.
So we don't lose it?
No, I'm just saying, I'm gonna say, if you budgeted in there and you don't spend it.
It's just gonna sit there, it just sit there, it's sit there.
Well, it'll just save what we have, though.
Yeah, and then I'll budget for it again next year, just in case you change your mind.
Are we, that, give them short-term disability? Or is that something they can pay if they want it outside of medical?
Well, here's the deal with that, you know, and I'm, I'm not speaking for everybody, I'm speaking for myself, but I'm pretty sure it applies to at least half of the people, because you can't get short-term disability outside of your employer because of medical things that have happened, so. For example, with me, as you know, I had, I had a pretty major surgery, so if I went and tried to get short-term disability on my own, I wa- I won't get it.
So you can get, so I got it.
But through the employer, but through the employer, they don't.
Not through my employer.
They don't, yeah, you probably don't have, I used to have it too, but I can't get it again.
And they didn't ask no questions on a certain amount, and I have, I'm a medication that will not allow me to have certain things too, going forward.
So, that, that's not applicable when it goes to your employer, though.
I know, I pay outside my employer.
Right, but I'm saying, you don't have those concerns, so use me for example.
I do.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, if you use me for example, if I tried to go get short-term disability on the market now, I would, I could not get it, okay? It's automatic through my employer, follow me? There's no, no medical questions asked to that, it's automatic.
Right, so mine is automatic through mine, with my issues that I have, medical issues.
Through your employer.
Through your employer.
I pay outside my employer. My employer is completely different, I pay, I have it through Aflac outside of, my employer doesn't pay a dime of it, I pay a hundred percent. And with my issues, I'm on medication, I'm probably with it the rest of my life, so I was able to still be on it. I have, and I just pay for it bi-monthly.
Yeah, like Aflac, Aflac's a, is a prime example, Aflac will help you now for short-term disability. But there's no, none of those questions are asked to your employer, it's au- it's automatic. So that's, and I will say, and again, I'm not gonna speak for every employer, but that's typically provided by your employer, the short-term piece. And then you also, and some employers do a, a small life insurance policy, you know, fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand, uh, for the employee only and things like that, but short-term disability is super important for all of us, I mean, if you have an event that takes you out of work, that's very, very important. And it's pretty inexpensive.
Does someone, someone wanna put a motion out there for ninety-ten?
I'm willing to make that motion.
Does I get a second?
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye. Abolled?
Yeah.
Motion carried. If there are no more updates, do I have a motion that we adjourn?
I'll make that motion, thank you.
Second? All in favor? Aye, one opposed. Meeting adjourned.